I guess six o'clock, we'll go ahead and start with the meeting for Michael's City Council this evening, if you'll join us, chant a bit of prayer. John, Michael.
I want to thank you for this day, thank you for all the blessings you've given us in our city, we ask you to continue blessing upon it, please give us wisdom here tonight to make the wise decisions that you want us to make, thank you for this Christmas season when we can celebrate your son Jesus's birth, and save us, and just thank you for all your blessings, Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Black will lead us through the life of a United States American, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every human justice for all.
Welcome everyone. First item, what do you call it?
The first on here is Clark Kerr.
Thank you guys for taking up a few minutes of your time, I appreciate it.
My name's Clark, Clark Kerr, I'm with Frontier Equipment Sales, we bid with the sweeper you guys were considering tonight, I was a little bid by $7,500 on one of our machines, and the, I also bid an option for stainless steel, with which can afford you guys a high type warranty on the hopper, so you don't have to worry about that. I was blessed 14 years ago to get an order from you guys on the first one, and had a good time with it, got to deliver it, got to train Mike Johnson, I don't know if any of you guys know Mike Johnson, super guy, a love man, sad that he's not with Sydney anymore, but God's annoyed really well, enjoyed him, and I was the man to train with him, got it going on it, and there were some times where we had some problems here and there, Mike was a lot of shy guy, he definitely didn't have any problems calling me and harassing me about it, but overall, he ran the machine, I think, the majority of the time that you guys had it, and I think that it, it, it served you well, and he enjoyed it, thought it did a fine job for you, and if it wasn't, he was gonna call me another day, so, it was a good machine, I wouldn't recommend running a machine for 14 years, you know, that's a long time, but I know how money's spent, sometimes you gotta make things last, so, but for the majority of that time, I feel like it did a pretty good job, and I've got, I don't know how many customers in Oklahoma that's got, there's, I probably know this, it's an old list, but you see, there's an old cities in Oklahoma that are running a hopper, so it's a well proven product, and, you know, the competition had been in the Elgin region, actually, which is what you guys are considering, you know, awarding this evening, it's only been out on the market for two years, so it may be the best sweeper, it may be twice as good as mine, it may be 10 times better than mine, I don't know, and you don't know, and Elgin doesn't really know, and here's Chuck, but he's hoping, but the unit I've got has proven, you know, there's a ton of cities that are using it, there's no question marks associated with it, you guys know what you're getting if you buy from it. So, the one thing I can do is I can't deliver immediately, when I got the bid, I didn't know that it was, that the timeframe was gonna be an issue, or I would've bid a demonstrator for the factory for me to deliver, but I didn't know, so I bid it as I normally would, so, our delivery's gonna be in March, and there's been some movements on delivery that would shorten that timeframe a little bit, it's moving in the right direction, but they can't guarantee it. When I found out that the delivery was a big deal, I didn't know, when I found out, I instantly called my regional guy and said, hey, you know, he's got the one sweep, maybe he gets something going right now, and he said, well, offer him an extra 12 month warranty on the sweeper, and give him 20 uppers, and see if that'll, I thought, I'll give it to him, I said, well, I'll offer it, but, I talked to Chuck about it, he wasn't sure since the bid had already been opened that he could accept that, but it's there, if you guys let's move to order, then we'll definitely honor that. But I can't do, I can't do an immediate delivery, I'm sorry. We're going into winter anyways, we're gonna have, when it's freezing, these machines sit, they don't get the sweep, so, you know, we're looking at 90 days-ish on the delivery, probably half of those days are gonna be freezing, bad weather, so we're looking at 40 days without, you know, 40 days that you guys are just gonna miss that you can be sweeping, and I understand that, and, boy, I wish I could do something different, but I can't. What I can do is, when the machine's delivered, you know what you're gonna get, I had it before, it's worked fine, if you wanted to save $725 to take stainless steel, you still save the same $725, and you walk away with the stainless steel offer, which would be great, or if you want to save a lot of money, $7,000, I don't know about y'all, but it's a lot of money to pay, so, if you guys could hold on to that 40 days, 45 days that you're gonna miss, you can save that type of money, I think it's worth it, but I don't know the other situation exactly, so, that's all I wanted to say, and I'm just gonna sit down and be quiet now, and if you have any questions, please call me, I'd love to have your business, like I said, I got to train Mike on the first one, I'd love to train the next guy, so, any questions for me?
Ken. Just curious, pros and cons to your machine over?
A little bit larger hopper capacity, the machine has, it's been in production for over 25 years, it's a really well sought after machine, machines, we don't have these laying around like the competitors does, because people want this type, the economy and way things are going right now, you don't have good equipment just sitting around, because the demand's really high, orders have been pushed back, our normal delivery would be about 45 days on a machine to 30 days, and it's been pushed to 90, and Schwartz is a really well organized factory, so, I'd say the biggest overall thing is just the track record, you've had it, it's done well, I took the liberty of looking up, I'm like, well, I wonder what that thing it cost Blackwell to maintain, so I looked up all them voices that you guys, on parts and stuff, and it came up to be about $1,300 a year, on just parts, I mean, not, not wear parts, but parts that break and things like that, that probably shouldn't break, which, that's, of course, three sweeper, $1,300 a year, that's, that's pretty good, so, capacity, you know, we're a little bit larger on the hopper, not anything major, but I can't really speak to benefits over the other machines, like I said, it's new, and we don't know what it's gonna be like in five years, your fucking machine I got will do the job for you, it's the same bat, so, that's, that's really all I can say, that's.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Sir, you alluded to the council already looking at another machine, that is not true.
I'm sorry?
You alluded to the councils already set their eyes on another machine, on another, hold on, let me finish, please.
I'm sorry?
That is not true, it's being presented to the council tonight to be, to make a decision, okay, so please don't put words in the council.
Oh, I misread the agenda, I thought it said that you were gonna award the deal to the region next, did I say that?
They're seeing it tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misread, I apologize, thank you. Okay, thank you. If I get the business, I'll take care of it, thank you.
Randy Holtz.
You have any comments with JR equipment, I just put my name on it, because if all of you have questions, nothing worse probably you have to do, so, I'm available for questions, we've shown the machine to Chuck, and he's unanswered questions, filled out the bid completely, so you have, you have a complete description of the machine, warranties, you have supply answer provided that, so anyway, if I can help with anything, any questions for me, I'd be glad to.
Reagan Jessica Beck.
Welcome back. Don, just way of course, I proposed that the issue of the second franchise on the cable TV system, to just a couple of ones, you know, when we try to look up clarity on anything, we don't see, I mean, the proper name is not even listed on this yet, I think the proper name is Clarity Telecom LLC, agenda consent is Clarity, so it's hard to look up who they are, also the fact that when we, we were looking into getting our franchise renewed, and even when we came to the council only three years ago, and we were required of the financial statements, we were required to show all sorts of financial information, and we've asked the city for any financial information on it, we didn't get anything on it, so I don't know if they've provided, you know, they say they've got $250 million or whatever they've got, I haven't seen any proof on any of that, and we haven't seen any proof of how deep their real pockets are, if they've got any money. You know, also the, the charter requires that they provide pricing before a franchise can be granted, to my recollection, they have not done that either, so, now, the only way to find clarity is under a new name called Blue Peak, so, I don't even know what company they're dealing with, because clarity's a bad, they've had four names so far, it's so dark, I don't know, I don't know if you guys know, I don't know how you can get a franchise now you know the name of the company, or have the financial statements or taxes, we just provided financial statements, taxes, how many thousands of labels in the back of the business, that's my thing, so, I haven't seen anything on them, so, also, you know, the only way to find out what their, got charged for cable TV and their franchise is to find them under Blue Peak, and, I don't know if you're aware of it, but their cable prices, 14 channels for $50, 78 channels $110, 136 channels $120, that's a heck of a difference in price from what we do in the city. Symmetrical is another issue, when we take a pipe and divide it with a 16-way splitter, and become 16 pumps to connect into 2.5 gigabyte interfaces, then those 16 people that are all simultaneously would get that division, so 2.5 divided by 16, so their family, they're gonna provide you symmetrical, okay, do we even know what symmetrical means, if you look under the FCC's definition, symmetrical means it's a one gig pipe, and you're sharing it with 10 people, then it's a hundred megabyte, simple math, now, simple math can also be taken from, this is a passage around, this is one 10 gig pipe, that's a new book, so you're looking at $4,000 to $5,000 of a lot, just for a 10 gig pipe, so if you're telling you're gonna give everybody a gig of different pipe, I mean, we can do compressions and share it out, there's no doubt about that, but we're talking of a lot of expense, you can't just give somebody a gigabit pipe, I mean, you can, but you're sharing it out, and you're not gonna give a gigabit, there's no internet pipe out there, or you're not gonna download from anybody that's gonna give you a true gigabit, so, I don't, I don't like the wording, being straightforward on this, because it doesn't make sense, there's, there's no way that we could put in 100 gigabit pipe and guarantee everybody a gigabit without splitting it up and running this thing, but, you know, it's, I'm seeing prices, they have given you prices of the ones they said in open meeting, that's the only price, and that's against the charter for you to grant a franchise, even look that up, I'll show it to you. So we were required to produce all sorts of financial statements, and last six months, like I said, it was nearly 500, maybe a thousand made in documents, and we're service, one thing, it's fair. So, also, my contract is 47 pages long, and they're making one that rises written up as 10, again, doesn't go anything in that, so I'd just like to ask the council to do some more research on this. You look at a hundred Blue Peak again, the name's on it, right on.
Any other public comments?
Yes.
Maybe move on to item 4, consent agenda.
If not, I'd move with you, Greg.
I'll second. Tracy.
Shepard.
Aye.
Grayville.
Aye.
Webb.
Aye.
Brayden.
Aye.
Move on to item 5, reports, that museum, might be just gonna look through and see if there's anybody, seen anyone here, speak on any of the authority board reports, anyone here from the city, then we'll just move on to finance report, Russ, as I know, would be due, there is a summary of this that is in the cut box. Any questions on that, as I was saying, just repeat it.
Sales tax is still doing great, we're, we're pretty much tracking along, Tracy and I went over this when we received it from Meacham, and maybe they would not be here. For being six months in, everything's tracking around well, everything's pretty much on par with all the departments, all the spending, the sales tax is still above average, what it's been in the last couple of years, Tracy anything about that?
No, I think that's it, he, he pretty much nails everything that we mentioned, we are tracking a little high on some expenses because we pay those quarterly ahead, our insurances and everything like that, so, that usually at the kind of end of every quarter, you'll see a jump there, that's what I'm telling some of that.
I've got a question, we used to get a report on the, on the trust mandate, you know, this label, or now that comes in monthly, I understand, I guess, I would like to see.
I'll absolutely get those for you.
Break down all that.
Sure. Absolutely.
Yeah, it was a little, little bit, I keep seeing it, it was summarized, we moved it over to one other portfolio.
If I can say, not overly prescient, is it?
We'll get that on there in the future, and that presentation, Bill Johnson. Any other discussion on the finance report? If there are any others, we move on to business, the item 8, consider approval of second reading of the ordinance number 2021-5, the city of Blackwell, Oklahoma, granting an all-exclusive permit to cable television operators for the construction and operation of a cable system, and providing for the permitting, article by commending part I, chapter 14 of the Blackwater Municipal Code 2020, with a new article five entitled C A T V permitting article, providing for section 14-130, entitled definition of terms, providing for section 1431, entitled grant of permit, providing for section 14-132, entitled standards of operation, providing for section 14133, entitled permit fee, rates, and charges, conditions on sale or transfer, providing for section 14134, entitled compliance and monitoring, providing for section 14135, entitled insurance, identification, bond, rather sure, providing for section 14136, entitled free internet access and emergency alert, providing for section 14137, entitled miscellaneous expenses, providing for revealers, savings, qualifications, serviceability, and emergency.
You have today the same ordinance, ordinance agreement that you received at the last time with one exception, and that is that we put a provision in there, that the council asked for, you didn't see what the build-out map was, and we provided you a copy of that build-out map, and we put a provision in here that that map is incorporated by reference in, in the work. Now, it, it, it's not my job to pitch a product, I'm trying to knock on the ticket, because that's not my, that's not my job, of course, the council's decision, of who should come in and serve certain public, the company is called Clarity Telecommunications LLC, that's plainly spelled out in the ordinance, and in Paul牧民, they are registered with the Secretary of State, in order to ensure that they have the financial means to do what they'd say that they were gonna do, under, they emailed Russ Meacham, this wasn't in your process, it was in Perry's process, which was about four or five months ago, and all what he recognizes is that they, they do have a huge debt obligation, that if this thing built and running, and that income coming in, that those debt obligations don't hit for about four or five more years, and they have, you know, you know, they have a great deal of money, and he had time, it was his opinion, that they have the financial, clearly have the financial ability to live up to their promises, and he stated that Perry's not here today, so he can't take my word, but that's what he stated, as far as whether the company has the type of persons, you know, on their corporate boards that know what they're doing, their, their top corporate board is kind of a who's who in cable TV and telecommunications, there, there are some top folks in the nation that are, that are on that board, so, I mean, I would say that they have the technical experience to run the company, now, the question is, you know, really, well, how are they doing, because they are a startup, I'm specific, they are, they are a startup, we didn't know about them last year, in fact, we didn't know that anybody would be interested to come into any of our communities and offer fire to the home, that was kind of a dream, you know, and then all of a sudden, you know, you've got somebody that's doing it, so, I can only speak to how they're doing, and they, they have a large portion of, of the Perry system already bored and, and, not powered up, not powered up, but, but bored and run, and at least from talking to the utility supervisor, who is the, the Greg Sixkiller, you know, down there, and he says that if there's a problem, it's a problem that they can't keep up with, that they, that they moved, that they're moving so fast, and from the administration side, they didn't have any objection, although there's things that happen, they bored into a, a couple sewer lines that were going into homes, you know, and they come out and work to fix them, so there are some issues, that they ran some truck tires over somebody's yard and made huge ruts, they're apparently fixing that, so, so that's really all I can say, Russ says they have the financial ability, I've looked at their board, and, and they have the talent on the board, and they're, and they're at least performing in both Enid and Perry where, where they kind of got a head start, okay, and, federal law supersedes a lot of things, it supersedes the Oklahoma Constitution, the Oklahoma Constitution says that you can't issue one of these to use the rights of them without voting the people, you can't, the Constitution says, but the federal law set up a scenario where you can't use that, you know, the public didn't vote it in, so you, you know, they can't come, there's an AG opinion on that issue, where the AG says that constitutional provision is, is void with respect to federal law, and, and the federal law, you know, white or not, can supersede, can supersede the Oklahoma Constitution, it can, it can supersede the charter for non-maturement, charter provision that requires rates, but if, if there is one, I can tell you that the federal law doesn't permit, and he didn't come stating rates, he's out there telling the truth, not, the federal law says that, that you can't regulate rates, you have no power to regulate rates unless there's no effective competition, okay, and.
Are most franchises stemming from because they're running through the public?
Yes, yes, it's because the, it's because the city holds those rights in trust for the public, and so there's a specific procedure, and as you know, I mean, if you didn't have an electric company, you would have to grant a franchise to OG&E, probably be 25 years with some provision, you guys do have a center point, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and that requires a, a franchise, and I will tell you that they have, there's a state law that says when the franchise isn't in effect, that you can pay grocery receipts back, and that works, I don't think that's constitutional, there's a Newcastle case, which indicates that, but, you know, that that's supposed to be, to be in the rights of where you're supposed to have, you know, a franchise, but that's superseded by cable TV, and there is an AG opinion, I can pull that in, because I, I, I've seen it before, and I was back in the, in the, it's actually, it's shown, okay, that AG opinion is shown, in the, you know, the email that I think that Jared sent each one of you that had that language talking about, if you grant something that is more favorable or less burdensome, that the in-existing cable operator has the right to come and ask for those to be made applicable to their franchise, and I think I, I covered that, and I said that if this got approved, if it got approved, and if it got accepted, signed off on, by Clarity, then, that probably send a copy of that off to Greg, and, and he can have his lawyer look at it, if there's anything under this agreement that he thinks is more favorable or less burdensome to him, then we have to let him have that, per state law, okay, now, I will tell you that, the reason that, if you remember this process, I created a universal permitting ordinance, kind of looks like this one, okay, that we were talking about having both groups, you know, both entities could come under, and that day, I gave Greg a copy of it, I'm sure he gave his council that, in Washington, but, from the council in Washington, they wanted the old franchise agreement, and they wanted the old public agreement with a few changes, and then we suggested a few changes, and, you know, it was only fair to do that, because had it been done during the last administration, it would've been done and overridden by the time this new proposal came out, so I thought that was completely fair to do, and I brought that to you for approval, it doesn't mean that all of them have to look like 1990 technology, you know, because that system does. Because that's what that system does and that's required in in that franchise, doesn't have to look like that. It's just that if you grant anything more favorable or less burdensome, the existing cable company has the right to request those. And I'll tell you right now, you must change it. You must change it because that's state law, okay? So, uh. But this is, if they had a law more, you know, you can't grant an exclusive franchise, you know? If they in fact put what they say they're going to put up, uh, it's it's providing the, you know, the the consumer an option. The consumer already has an option, which is broadband now and, you know, a few of the other carriers. And who knows, I mean, it may be, you know, you look at a picture of all the satellites that are that are currently, you know, around the globe. You know, this thing could all flip then or it could flip uh when when AT&T introduces their small cell technology. And there's a statute on that, we're going to need to have to pass an ordinance on that. They're going to put their facilities in the right of way and uh, you know, this is an ever-changing, an ever-changing thing. And and I can't tell you that that uh that this won't change because we're going fast. Because I, who've done this for forty-two years, you know, never expected uh someone to to come and, you know, offer to do fiber to the home, fiber business like this, so. Well, that's enough. If you have any questions that I can answer, I will try. Once again, it's not my job to recommend and it's your job to figure out what you want to allow in your right of way. Now, I will tell you that, you know, I said in the source that if you if you adopted this permitting ordinance, then it comes with a poll attachment agreement. And and I handed out a new and it was actually negotiated, just small points up until the last, what, half an hour ago. Uh, one thing you'll see on the front of the page, everything that's underlined is something that our resident expert. And I mean, your resident expert, Chad, has, you know, dealing with polls and and all of that, spoke to me and recommended. And it makes it a better deal. I mean, if you look at the, well, not A, what they had on the first page. And B, I'll talk about that in a second, okay? But what I tried to do is put a CPI clause there on the poll room that looked exactly like Mr. Pepper's or Get Real's, okay? That that's now shung as deleted and and I'll tell you why in in a second. The the next one is, you know, if they're putting this up, we want one hundred percent tree clearing, you know, while they're out there. If there's trees, clear them, you know, out of the way. And the last piece is kind of application fees and this will amount to thousands of dollars. Uh, that will reimburse us, really, your uh your your public work employees for time spent in the application fee. Looking at the polls, making sure that it gets set, uh, that they get set right and that they and that they work right. There there's only, uh, if you if you turn it to seven point three, then this really goes to now backwards, which is crossed out. Uh, Chad pointed out that there already was a provision in this which allows fee rental increases. And he felt, he probably correctly felt, that it conflicted with one of the stuff on the first page. And it provides that every three years that you can adjust those poll rental fees. And if you see the part that's underlined, that's what got added today, okay? That any adjustment we must make must be just and reasonable and must be in 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 line with the federal poll act. Which if you look at your, well, it says a statute that's referring, that statute referred to that big wad of paper that you kept. That we put out in front of you of that act. And I can just tell you that that the numbers for poll rentals in that act are higher than what we're doing and be based on that. I mean, uh, so I I think that that is going to be significantly better than a cost of living increase. They were wanting to set a maximum on that and I said, no, let's just do it as per the the federal poll. So that's one thing that's added. The only other thing that's added, which was in, I must have been using an old copy or something. If you go to page uh. If you go to page of twenty, twenty and twenty-one, there is a lessor, there was a licensor indemnification and a licensee indemnification. The old woman wasn't a licensor indemnification, we are the licensor, okay? That got added back, but it got caveated with to the extent permitted under Oklahoma law. And it's my opinion that no public entity which has the city's beneficiary can actually indemnify, okay? So I I think the first phrase kind of takes out that indemnification, but everybody wants that. ODOT wants that, there there's lots of folks that want that. So you always can caveat that with the language that's then permitted under Oklahoma law. And I think that's kind of a a check being found where the provision doesn't apply. If you do look at it, it's just that we are responsible for our own towards and we're out there, you know, we're responsible. And, you know, we're responsible anyways, you know, for for that treaty. So that's the poll attaching agreement. Now, if you're going to approve the permitting agreement, you know, you want to make that contingent upon, you know, the approval of this. Because for that, you know, for this, you know, that's, I'm sorry.
All right, that's easy. I mean, I. Feel like, I mean, the the franchise and the poll attachment agreement is kind of, I've been trying to, uh, there's been lots of talk about what they can do, what they'll charge and everything. And I'm, I mean, they're still a private company and I don't know why. I guess I feel like, I don't know why as a municipal government, I mean, if no one does business with them, they, that's on them. I mean, when they charge too much or don't run lines, I mean, I don't know why it's our job to regulate how they run the business. Um, but I think what it, for me, it comes down to is, I mean, if we have, because they're using our right of ways and our polls. And we cover the cities around, I mean, at least for me, I mean, that is kind of the extent of it. Now, as long as we're not, you know, making it easier or harder for what two people are doing, providing the same service. I mean, we don't do that for restaurants, um, I mean, there's other similar providers that don't do their right of ways and they don't have a franchise. I mean, that's, you know, it's, I don't know, I guess that's kind of like Chisen Broadway. Because they're they're a microwave or a radio wave. You know, they actually didn't use our rights way until they run up and down our our streets. But he recognizes that they have a duty to pass anything, so, so they don't. You know, th- this whole model is 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 old, you know? And it comes out of the the fact that out here in the rural areas, back in the sixties and seventies. If you put up an antenna, you didn't get much, you know, you didn't get much at all. So these cable companies came along and uh and cities could apply, you know, a bunch of regulations. There was no federal law, okay? So cities did whatever they wanted. And in nineteen eighty-four, petitioning by the cable companies, and there were big ones then, TCI, John Malone, Giant. You know, petitioning the company, they did a trade and that trade was a maximum five percent gross receipts for pretty much. If 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 you haven't noticed that cable company about their wrong things and kept up on them during that term. And they're pretty much guaranteed a rule. And that was the deal that was made in in eighty-four and that was a long time ago. And now technology is gone, where the very best cameras that were used, you know, for the last, how many years? We wanted, this isn't a thirteen, but if it was a thirteen, you know, the camera in, didn't my thirteen would be better than any of those cameras that were that were used. And the fiber and the speeds and all that and yet the law hasn't caught up with that.
Right, I've, uh, listen to Rick, I I've been thinking. I mean, we have two companies that want to do business, do now. Why would we have different, have any different requirements for either one, do we? In other words, a contract for Get Real or a contract for Clarity, should should it not be the same?
Well, I don't think, well, I don't think Get Real wanted to be the same, okay? Because this particular ordinance requires that company to install fiber to the home to ninety percent of the area within 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 the service area, within a three-year period. That's going to take a two to three million dollar commitment, okay?
But they still have with that, less burdensome, if anything in the the new franchise.
That Get Real wants.
Gives them a better, they feel is an advantage they can, they can have. So I mean, I have still, puts them back on a level, should put them back on a level.
I I mean, the hard piece always is the system, okay? So it's the rest are words, you know, insurance indemnity, all on whether or not.
But our our city's requirements to that company, to either one of them, I would think would be exactly the same. They want to do business there, they say they're going to come in and they're going to provide the service to the community. I I don't know that that's, we're we're willing to speak into that as long as it's not affecting.
For using our polls, our, I mean, touching our polls.
But but we would require the same for, as far as use of our polls, uh.
Well, but Get Real, Get Real's price is less than the six dollars. And I mean, I mean, theirs is four twenty or something. So there's pieces of their agreement which are which are more favorable than this. And anything that is more favorable in this document, they get to add. They just need to give us a writing of what they consider more favorable and we have to amend their agreement to reflect it. You need to remember, the reason that we use the old agreement with respect to them is that that's what they asked for. I mean, I mean, I mean, that's, I mean, that's what they asked for.
So what they've asked for today, I already got that very same thing according to you.
No, it's all it's not that way.
Oh, no, no, it doesn't go back the other way. It it it, the statute is written to protect the the existing cable. Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, wonder who who lobbied for that? I think the cable TV, the existing cable TV comes, but there's not a problem with it. Because they've been there for a long period of time, they've been serving for a long period of time. If you're going to do something better to somebody else, then you have to do it to them, you know? Now, it's rare that it comes so quickly because nobody overbuilds. I mean, this is an overbuild. This is like somebody coming in here and wanting to offer electricity, to spend the money, to hand electric into community against us. Or coming in here and wanting to offer gas, this never happens. And that's why, like I said, I was so surprised because nobody ever overbuilds like that in a in a rural Oklahoma community. But the rules are, you know, it's changing now, you know, I mean, it's it's different now. But Get Real will get everything that they prefer, when they give us a writing, that they prefer that's better than this. And 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 Clarity is stuck with this. They they don't get to to get the good parts of of Get Real, like like the lower, like the two-dollar lower, uh, approximate.
But we didn't set the real price for the franchise fee. I mean, a franchise that's from how many years ago? I mean, that's, that's why there's some differences because looking at, maybe we need to do it a little differently, I mean, is that?
Well, no, yeah, I mean, the reason is, is the reason I said, you know, cities heavily regulated in the P. Uh, and then the act came in, but those franchises kind of kind of continued if the cable company wanted them to. And of course now, you know, I mean, cable is on the way down and it's all done by internet streaming. You know, if he, if if Clarity didn't offer, you know, CATV, you know, it may just be a poll agreement. Uh, that they would, that's the way it's done in other places. But uh, but once again, I I don't want to offer, I don't want to be offering reasons, I don't want to be answering your questions, but not reasons to support either of them.
Well, I'm not either, I'm just, I'm just, you know, it's just kind of how the language. I guess I just hadn't got it, why it's not a level playing field for for both.
Well, well, absolutely will be with a couple of exceptions, okay? Once they give us a letter and ask the things that they feel that are more favorable, less burdensome in this agreement, okay? Then then it will be leveled, with the exception that they will pay less in poll rental and they will not have the ob, ob, they will not have the obligation to build a fiber to the home, you know, within very.
First, to Get Real.
To Get Real, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and that and that, and that's better for them because, you know, I mean, they don't have to put out that money capital is, you know, is in short supply, okay? In in many places. Now, not in this startup, you know, because Clarity, the Blue Peak, they have, uh, you know, they they, the investors have come together with a giant. And and they've got to get this implemented, they have to have a revenue stream there because in a few years, they're going to have debt payments, giant debt payments today, you know?
All right, that's, I guess, fair enough for me.
Well, the the good questions, because this is abnormal, okay? This is not normal and and you have a right to question this because this is something I never thought I'd see. An overbuild in in a community, I I didn't think I'd see this, this is. Now, now, maybe COVID pouring all these dollars in, you know, that makes sense, right? I mean, that that the Fed pitches money in and so there's an availability of capital. But it's very rare for a for a startup to have the capital and agree to come in and to do that, I never thought I'd see. And and I doubt that you'll ever see it in gas and I don't think you'll ever see it really in electricity. Uh, you know, but everything now is, you know, let's face it, it's all technology, right? I mean, that's, that's where we're going.
Man, I feel like we have things in place to kind of put two businesses kind of on the even point table that you were putting. And, I mean, and how they perform and provide services, I mean, they're they're their own companies, that's kind of on them. And customers will dictate how well they do or don't do. Um, but I would make the much of the approval.
Brayden?
Hi.
Shepherd?
Hi.
Webb?
Hi.
Greenfield?
I'm staying. I'm B, consider approval emergency clause for ordinance number two zero two one dash one five.
If if we don't get four votes on that, then we'll have to publish the whole, uh, the whole ordinance in in the newspaper cost a lot more. I'm, oh, yes, on that, yes. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, many people do for the savings, uh, for the savings.
Okay. So I, we consider approval emergency clause for ordinance number two zero two one dash one five.
Uh, I think we approved.
Same. Tracy?
Webb?
Hi.
Greenfield?
Hi.
Shepherd?
Hi.
Brayden?
Hi.
Moving on, I see this, consider approval award, J J Equipment LLC for the Eldred Region X, including a five-year warranty on chassis, engine, after treatment transmission. In two years, totaling the amount of two hundred and forty-five dollars.
Evening, gentlemen. Uh, we didn't receive, this would find you. Uh, we did receive bids for five different machines, two different companies. Of those machines, I'm asking you to consider approving the Elgin Regen X. I'm in no way saying the short machine is inferior or not a good machine. Uh, but what I am saying is, I, I have looked over the, the Elgin, and my operators have looked over the Elgin, and there are some things about it that feel better. I put together this list for you so we can kind of go over and you can see my reasoning. Top page there says operator and maintenance frequent. The first thing that we did notice is that they turned the auxiliary engine sideways instead of parallel with the frame of the machine. What that does is it puts the radiator on one side and puts the drive belt and blower on the other side. That eliminates the, the possibility of blowing when you're cleaning out the debris hopper, blowing that trash and stuff in that radiator. There've been a couple times with our machine that we've had overheating problems to the maintenance shop, problems that's had dirt in the radiator. And, you know, you try not to do that, but it's, it's kind of inevitable. It also moves the drive belt to the, the outside, between cab and the, and machine. The belt drive is also on a spring booted tensioner instead of the engine slide where you have to adjust the engine mount to tighten that belt. I just feel that's a better setup. The screams inside the debris hopper, kind of push button remote on the outside lets the screams down by cables, makes it easier to clean. You really like that? Swiper head adjustment chains that we move from underneath the machine to the outside of the machine. So you're not having crawling there to adjust those chains. The flaps on the sweeper head are very easy to change. You just unlock four bolts on front of the head, those flaps will actually under there to change and you slide back in there, put the four bolts back in, you're good to go. Where our current machine, we had to put it on the pit, get underneath, get all that stuff in your, your face, change those flaps, or you had to pull the head completely underneath the machine. Has a washout port on the side of the sweeper head, makes it really easy to clean underneath that sweeper head. The debris hopper sends a pie where you dump the debris. That's not something that we could use all the time. But I, I can give you exactly where it would come in handy, and that's when we have the livestock show, the fairgrounds, all the sawed ass and all the straw and everything. We usually have to down with the leather to take that, to put it in the dumpster. This way we could say that, dump right in the dumpster. Has a lifetime RT on the debris hopper, two years on sweeper unit, one year on the truck, with an option to purchase five years on the truck. And it also comes with a hundred and twenty broom segments, which is about twenty-four brooms, and it lasts quite a while. And the main thing, the biggest thing, is the sweeper is available immediately. You guys have seen that I've been milling off some streets downtown, I land sweeper to sweep the streets, and leaves have been falling. I've got work orders in here, people are calling, I don't know why the street sweeper will be mine, sweep the mistresses. I need, I need a machine now. The, the snow is coming, we'll be putting down sand, salt. We get a good day after that, we'll run that machine to get sand back up. So that's, that's my spiel of the thing.
Do you do a bid, like having availability, is that, you know, like one of the things where you, when you're specing it out, that's what you do that?
That's not something I did believe in there. I did.
I just, I'm wondering about that.
I did ask Randy to give me some references, he gave me some references, I called. It's a relatively new machine, it has new design, it was a bit around for a long time, but this is a new design. And so there's not a lot of them. I did speak to one city in Oklahoma, they're very pleased with theirs. I talked to the city in Missouri, they're very pleased with theirs. And I talked to a city in Florida, they have flooring, they sit and run them every day, all day long, they love them, so they're very happy with it.
Or chassis or is it going? It's on freight.
The, the standard is, is lowest of best, okay? And, but, but there was nothing in the bid about timing, but that doesn't mean that you can't consider timing, that is the fact. You know, if you do choose to award a bid to this, then I would award the bid on this pursuant to the reasons that you have set out in this memo, and ask that those things, those items be included in the minutes for, for, for purposes of discussing the decision. Now, you can make whatever decision that you want, including continuing into another meeting if you wanted to, to, to look into it further.
You know, personally, I, I think the thing that Chuck has pointed out, the ease of service, I think that's important. My years with ARO, so I worked on a lot of different equipment, some equipment was friendly, some was not. I much prefer to service, didn't have an option, but I enjoy it, service the equipment where there was thought or maintenance of cable. And so, don't want to take the lead, it's a good reason to go with this.
So we are offered for the five-year chassis warranty, is that, wait, remake rate?
Yes.
That's the most smart thing to do, to get ready.
It's pretty, for bidding alternatives that run.
Yes, of course, yes. Range total of us, two hundred and forty-five thousand.
Was a free step up to our next unit? Is there a big difference, there's a van, you own single engine versus dual, or?
I can't answer that, I've never used a single engine. The only half is a dual engine.
It's more, that's a lead up to that.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. Please, Chuck, thank you, Chuck. Action my counsel. Any more discussion?
I, I would, maybe if we approved the bid.
Right, again.
I'll second. And, and that would be for the, for the reasons set out, Cole and Curry.
Correct, yeah, the reasons set out here.
Tracy?
Greenfield?
Hi.
Brayden?
Hi.
Shepherd?
Hi.
Webb?
Hi.
I am D, is consider approval of award of bid for the finance and street sweeper with RCB Bank at two point one percent for sixty months on two hundred and forty-five thousand, authorized the mayor and clerk to execute the lease purchase agreement.
Uh, mayor's council, we came before you and requested a go out for bid on this item. We received three bids. Uh, local bank RCB came in at two point one for sixty months. That's going to be a monthly payment of about forty-three hundred dollars. Very good interest.
I'm curious, we didn't have any other locals on the get on?
We did not, the other, what were the others? One was out of Kansas.
One was out of Kansas and one was out of New York.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not going to say they weren't, weren't helpful.
That was all local bid we received, well, I've seen, I've seen that well, so I'm wondering in all the documents, I've seen them, and then on several items that we've listed out. Even though.
All right, well, this is the recommendation.
And I can say we believe that we approve the bid for RCB Bank.
I'll second. Tracy?
Shepherd?
Hi.
Webb?
Hi.
Brayden?
Hi.
Greenfield?
Hi. I am E, consider coming to executive section one to discuss the purchase or trade of certain real property to be acquired as a site for the new Blackwell water treatment plant pursuant to title twenty-five section three oh seven B three of Oklahoma statutes as amended in two for the purpose of a confidential communication between public body and its attorney concerning pending investigation claim or action of the public body with the advice of its attorney determines that the disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct, conduct pending investigation litigation or proceeding in the public interest pursuant to title twenty-five section three oh seven B four of Oklahoma statutes as amended, the parking hotel.
All right.
Look, we go to executive.
Tracy?
Greenfield?
Hi.
Brayden?
Hi.
Webb?
Hi.
Shepherd?
Hi.
Moving on to I, left, reconvene at the regular session.
Salute.
Second. Tracy?
Webb?
Hi.
Brayden?
Hi.
Shepherd?
Hi.
Greenfield?
Hi. I am G, taking the action being necessary due to such a thing, especially including directness and manager who is in proper correspondence to the only request of the purchase of such a property and offering fair market value and directness of the attorney to take appropriate action on the parking hotel.
I don't think that we have to formally take action on that, at this time, on, on either item.
Moving on to item seven, this new business, the city of Blackwell City, other business that are being done during the meeting of Blackwell City Council. Begin the meeting as Blackwell municipal authority. First item on the BMA side is going to be consent agenda.
Will we approve?
Second. Tracy?
Shepherd?
Hi.
Greenfield?
Hi.
Webb?
Hi.
Brayden?
Hi.
First item of the business, consider approval of resolution one two one four two zero two one.
FERC, which of course regulates electric distribution and new power plants and sales in the country, came out this order two 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 two. And what, what it allows is third-party aggregators to use what I would say is probably green energy in, in all, in all the communities, fail to affirmatively opt out of FERC order two 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 two, okay? Now, what, what is an aggregator? Well, let me give you the best example that I can because it's come up one place in the state so far, and it's in one of the cities that I've heard of, okay? And in this city, they have a, they have a dog food plant, a major dog food plant, two hundred and fifty employees there. And they just finished a one hundred and twenty thousand square foot facility to move pallets of dog food and the rest, but it's larger than that. But the problem that they have, and this is an OMPA city, is that power blinks. And it blinks because it comes in under an OGE line, which OGE, quite frankly, doesn't take care of very well. And I'm not afraid of saying that because it's the truth, you know? Well, guess what happens when you're, when you're making a giant batch of, 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 of dog biscuits, you know, batter? Well, when that blink happens, that batch is ruined, okay? So the team went out and got it, I think it's called a UTS, something UT something, which immediately, when it blinks, it keeps the power going and then it kicks in a seven hundred thousand dollar generator, a big generator. And they actually have bought two of those generators, frankly, the city through OMPA, that was a deal through OMPA. OMPA lent the town, they, he authority the money and, and have built this well. You know, mostly those generators just sit there and do nothing. It is, they're, they're blinks. These aggregators come along and they go, hey, man, those are big generators, that thing is running the whole time. And then I can take some power over here in Union City, up here in Arc City, and down here in Texas and all that, I have just built myself a little power plant, and I can make all these folks buy that juice, okay? Well, we can take that example, that's an example of the generator. You can take that example to solar power, you can take that example to, to windmill power, you know, anything where the customer is generating the, the power, right? And this FERC order allows these aggregators to aggregate that and sell that back on the systems, okay, including those. However, we have an agreement with OMPA that says that we'll buy, you know, all of our power from them, there's a little percent that allows for, for some solar and some other stuff, but mostly you're buying all the power from them. And of course, you know, that's the way it is with a member organization because we own a small portion of all their power plants. And, and, you know, we own OMPA as, as a member city. And, and Blackwell's one of the biggest, you know, there's lots of cities, but Blackwell's one of the, one of the largest, Edmonds, of course, you know, D largest, but Blackwell's big. And, uh, and so, OMPA doesn't want you to buy that power from somebody else that you buy from them in accordance with your, in accordance with your agreement. So OMPA is telling us, look, you know, the FERC order says that if you don't, if you don't generate, I think it's four million megawatts, yeah, that's what it says, four million megawatts, then you can exempt out of that FERC order, okay? And that's what OMPA is asking us to do, in my opinion, that's what's best for the city of Blackwell because it's what's best for OMPA, and we are a member of them. And so that, that's the best explanation that I can give you.
All right. After the explanation, recommendation?
Yes.
Counsel, have any other questions or action? Thank you, motion to approve the resolution. Tracy?
Webb?
Hi.
Brayden?
Hi.
Shepherd?
Hi.
Greenfield?
Hi. I am D, is consider approval of utility provider contract with the state of Oklahoma Department of Human Services for low-income household water assistance program. Basically what this is, we already have this in place for electric, this is just expanding the ability to help those in need, uh, from the Oklahoma Department of Human Services. We already, we already have the policies and procedures in place, this will just allow us to accept for water as well.
Make the motion to approve. Second. Tracy?
Greenfield?
Hi.
Webb?
Hi.
Shepherd?
Hi.
Brayden?
Hi.
I am C, consider approval of poll agreement with Clarity Telecom LLC for a ten-year agreement concurrent with permitting ordinance agreement.
I think I addressed this on, on the other, on the other item, so I really don't have anything in. So I really don't have anything in addition to add to this unless there's any questions.
I'll make the motion to approve the poll agreement.
Let it go.
Tracy?
Brayden?
Hi.
Webb?
Hi.
Greenfield?
Hi.
Shepherd?
Moving on to new business, any action? There is no new business to say anything about. We're being, uh, Germany of Blackwell Municipal Authority, Open and Blackwell Facilities Authority. First item is going to be the incentive again.
Luke, we approve.
Tracy?
Greenfield?
Hi.
Shepherd?
Hi.
Brayden?
Hi.
Webb?
Hi.
Moving on to new business, anything underneath there? About to see you there. I see. Germany of Blackwell Facilities Authority.